Welcome, everyone, to the Asheville City Council Budget Work Session. I am here in the chamber along with three council members, Vijay Kapoor and Julie Mayfield and Gwen Whistler. And we have three council members attending by phone, Brian Haines, Keith Young, and Shanika Smith. And we are going to be -- are you going to start us off? Okay. We'll hear from our manager, Deborah Campbell.
Good afternoon, everyone. Our last budget work session was in mid-March. What a difference a month makes. Appreciate you all being here under these very uncertain and troubling times to continue the business of the city. And the subject matter that we're going to cover, and Tony McDowell, who is the Assistant Finance and Budget Director, will be doing the majority of the presentation and the heavy lifting, and he'll be responsible for answering all the questions. So just ask Tony. But essentially, we want to talk to you about our current budget, the impact that the COVID-19 pandemic has, I guess, impacted this year's budget, as well as talking about next year's budget. And we're going to have a fairly detailed discussion and drill down on each one of these matters. The current budget, and where we are, and next fiscal year's budget. So obviously, I think something happened. Did that? Okay. The COVID-19 has significantly impacted lots of things, obviously. We've had some operational changes in terms of fare-free transit, free on-street parking, and garage parking for free, deferring some of our leases, trying to help our partners, contribution to the Bunkham One Bunkham Fund, and sheltering at Harris Center. So we've had, obviously, significant revenue and expenditure impacts. But what we hope, if you don't remember anything from this presentation, and as I've talked to you in your check-ins, this is going to be a presentation that's going to be really heavy with a lot of numbers. It is truly a numbers game right now. It is how do we make it through this year's budget without significantly impacting services as well as our employees, and keeping the community hopeful about the future, and making it through this public health emergency. But to do that, unfortunately, I talked about a numbers game, some of the numbers just aren't here yet for us to be able to make some very definitive decisions. So we're operating in the great. We are going to provide you with as much information as we can and as we have. So the information will be the best that we can give you. We hope that you all will consider at least delaying, and it'll be an action toward the end of the presentation, to extend the deadline for the budget adoption around for two weeks. And we will hope that you will agree to do that. And so, again, if you don't remember anything, maybe those couple of things. I think you are transitioning? Yeah. So I will ask Tony to come up somehow with slides. Glenn, can you get me that?
All right. Good afternoon. Tony McDowell from the City's Finance Department. As Deborah said, this is a very numbers-heavy presentation. I see some smiles already about that. Please feel free to stop me as we go through and ask any questions you may have. How we're going to structure is we're going to spend a little bit of time talking about the current year, and how we see revenues being impacted, as well as spending, and what we're going to continue to spend money on the current year. We're going to talk a little bit about some of the strategies we're implementing to reduce spending where possible. And then we're going to talk a little bit about what we think some of the outcomes are going to be with revenues and expenses. In particular, we're looking at the General Fund, the Parking Fund, and the Harris Civic Center Fund as being areas where we think we're going to end the year with expenses exceeding revenues, and we'll have to dip into fund balance in those funds. And then finally, we'll talk some about the potential of federal and state assistance, and how that might mitigate the financial impact. So we're going to go through all that, talk about current year, and then we'll pause and let you all ask some questions, and then we'll go into talking about how this is impacting next year's budget. And I've got some notes here on my phone, so you may see me looking down here and flipping as well. So to start off, and again, we're going to spend a lot of time here in the first few slides talking about revenues and the impact in the current year. So we want to start by reminding everyone about the mix and the nature of our revenues in the General Fund. And you all have seen this chart many times. About 80% of our revenues are divided into three categories: property taxes, sales taxes, and state utility taxes. That smaller group of about 20%, that makes up our fees and charges.
Hey, Tony, hold on one second.
Yes, ma'am.
These guys say they cannot hear.
Can you just get closer to the mic?
They're having a hard time. Is that going to do it?
That's what.
Our high-tech phone attendant system is a phone with the hook off.
Okay.
It's no mic.
Yeah. Yeah. Let me know if you all can't hear, or if they can't hear on the phone. Okay. So again, this is our revenue mix in the General Fund, and we're going to kind of run through how the COVID-19 crisis is impacting these revenues. I'm going to start with the general, I mean, with the property taxes. And as you all know, this is our largest revenue source. And I think the good news here for revenues in the General Fund is the property tax. And it's because of the way the system is set up here in North Carolina. Bills go out in the late fall, and most of the revenues are collected in December and January. So we've already collected about a little over 99% of our property tax levy in the current year. One thing we have heard from the county tax office, though, is that because of the crisis, they do believe there may be a reduction in their overall collection rate for the year. Bunkham County has a very high, in fact, one of the highest, collection rates in North Carolina. Last year, they collected about 99.95% of our property tax levy. They think this year, because of the crisis, that's going to, that percent's going to lower to somewhere between 99.25% and 99.3%. And that may not sound like a lot. It's not in terms of percentages, but when you talk about large dollar values, we think that may have as much as a $400,000 impact on our property taxes this year. And we'll talk a little bit about how that's going to impact next year as well, once we get there. But overall, even with that reduction, we still think we're going to come in on budget on property taxes for the current year. Moving on to sales taxes, our second-largest General Fund revenue source. This is the revenue that we're most concerned about. It's the one we think is going to be most impacted by the current crisis, and we think that it's going to come in substantially under budget in the current year. And I'll show you all some numbers in a few moments. One of the things we're dealing with, though, right now is it's very, very difficult to predict exactly where this revenue source is headed. What we're going through right now is unprecedented in its nature, so it's challenging to come up with estimates. During the depth of the Great Recession about 10 years ago, the worst quarterly performance we had for sales taxes was a 10% decline. By comparison, the League of Municipalities is estimating right now that for the last quarter of this fiscal year, we may see a 20% decline. Some other folks across the state are estimating an even higher decline. The Bunkham County Budget Office, when they did their presentation to their board last week, indicated that they're assuming a 35% decline for April through June. And part of the problem with, or probably one of the challenges of making these estimates is we don't really have any real-time information to evaluate where we're at. There's a three-month lag between when sales takes place, sale takes place, and when we receive the revenue back from the state of North Carolina. So we won't see the first of the data that may give us any indication of where we're at until June. And that'll be from March. And as you all know, March was, we were half-open for March and half-shut down for March. And so it's really going to be July when we see those April sales tax numbers before we have a good grasp of how big the decline is really going to be. So just to give you all some perspective in terms of numbers, for sales taxes, typically in the last quarter of the year, we collect about $7 million in sales taxes. So if we see a 20% decline, we're going to end up with about $1.4 million less. If that decline is 35%, it could be as much as $2.5 million.
Is this just the quarter?
Yes.
This just the fourth quarter?
Yes. Yeah. Annually, we get, I'll go back to the, annually, we get about $28.5 million, that bottom-right slice there.
We may want to think about adjusting the slide just to make that clear.
Or just title it.
Yeah. Right. Like saying.
Like call this Quarterly Collection.
Right. I'm so glad to know I was not the only person confused by that slide.
I was looking at it going, oh.
Yeah. Yeah. We should have called this Quarterly Collection. Okay. So outside of the sales taxes, we do expect there to be some other revenue impacts in the General Fund, state utility taxes. It is, it will be impacted from the reduced commercial activity on the electricity consumption side, so we likely will see that revenue decline. We know our investment earnings revenue is going to go down because interest rates have been reduced. We're also seeing a slowdown in development services. Over the three-week period between March 19th and April 8th, there was a 46% decline in revenue in development services compared to what we've seen over the last three years. So there's definitely been a slowdown there as well. Nature Centers closed, and if we continue that through the rest of this fiscal year, that'll be about a $200,000 impact. And then, obviously, with no recreation programming being offered at the moment, there's a revenue impact there as well. With all that being said, there's a lot of unknowns on the revenue side. And we've already talked a little bit about the sales taxes and just really not knowing where they're headed in terms of the breadth and depth of the decline. There's also concern about potentially a delay in some revenues we're going to get. The state is considering suspending motor vehicle registrations and also deferring sales tax payments for businesses. As I understand it from some information we got from the League last week, those can't be officially put in place until the legislature comes back into session and makes those official. But those are possible. And so what that would mean, that would just be a cash flow issue for us. So revenue that we might get in this fiscal year would not come until next year, which would have an impact on our end-of-year fund balance if that happens. And then, obviously, there's a big unknown about how much federal and state assistance we're going to receive. There's been some information received and released about the CARE Act, and we know that there's going to be money coming in for transit related to that. But we don't know the full scope of it yet. The League of Municipalities, last week, I know, sent letters to the state and also to our federal representatives about identifying the need for replacement of lost revenue for local governments. We don't know yet if there will be anything received. At the moment, at least, there's not any assistance that will replace those lost or declining revenues for this fiscal year.
Tony?
Yes?
Can you, so, do you have any feel about why the pretty large disconnect between the estimated reduction in sales tax from the League versus what Bunkham County is presuming?
That's a great question. I think, so, you know, a lot of our, obviously, our economy here is very tourist-based and retail-based with restaurants and such. And so with the current crisis, I think the assumption from the county budget staff is that we're going to see a larger hit to our economy here locally than perhaps the rest of the state may see.
So the League's looking at the whole state?
Yes.
Right. But maybe between now and then, it would be interesting to see what the other, what the other large municipalities are assuming. I mean, if we can find cities that look more like us than the entire state.
Yeah. And we've talked to a few other places across the state. I actually, hadn't been in my office in about three weeks. I had a voicemail from the Budget Director in Wellington who wanted to talk about sales taxes. And so we'll definitely reach out and see what.
That's a good comparison.
Yeah, it is. Yeah, good comparison. So we'll let you all know what we find out on that.
Thank you.
A little closer up here. Okay. All right. Okay. We'll get this mic thing right eventually. Okay. So where does this leave us? We think, and again, it's very difficult right now to give you all an exact number. We think in the General Fund, the potential loss on the revenue side could be as much as $4 million. And this slide kind of tries to give an indication of where those losses may be. So switching gears just quickly, and we'll come back to the revenues and tie this all together later, but kind of moving back to the expenditures, and Deborah talked a little bit about this at the beginning. You know, even with the crisis, we're going to continue to spend in certain areas, spending priorities for the current year. And that includes maintaining our current personnel, and as a part of that, maintaining paid administrative leave for folks through the duration of the emergency. Obviously, we're going to continue to spend on essential services. Any expenses we may have to have in response to the COVID-19 crisis, we'll move forward with those. And then the last thing we wanted to highlight to you all is, as you know, we mentioned at the retreat, that we wanted to move ahead with implementing the $31,200 pay adjustment and addressing the compression associated with that in the current fiscal year. And we would like to continue with that plan and implement that in the 1st of May. And the estimated impact of that in the General Fund for just two months is only about $75,000 in the current year. And so we, based on that adjustment and the study done by Archer Company, that there's about, be about 120 employees or so that would be, that would receive that adjustment. Most of those employees are in the Public Works, Parks and Rec, and Water Departments. We are, however, as I mentioned, looking at ways we can reduce expenses in the short term, and I think these are kind of the standard-type strategies that you see a lot of budget offices, a lot of cities implement in the short term, kind of belt-tightening measures, one of which is to implement a hiring freeze for all existing vacancies, with exceptions for public safety positions and other positions that are approved by the city manager. And then we're also going to look at delay, or delaying or foregoing other operating expenses as we can. Obviously, given the current situation, there's not a lot of training and travel going on, so we'll look at reducing expenditures in those areas, evaluating contracted services as those start to come through in the last few months of the fiscal year as well.
Tony, on this one, just if you could go back on the employees. We're self-insured for health insurance, right?
Correct.
And so a lot of the folks that I know are dealing with risks right now are actually seeing a reduction in health insurance because no one's having any elective procedures, and they've, you know, some of the places I've seen, I've seen reductions of about 30% in terms of their spending now. I'm not sure what's happening here. Do you have a sense of how our healthcare is trending and, you know, and, you know, there's a question of whether or not that's just a shift, right? Once things open back up, is that, is that going to, are we going to see all of a sudden a lot of folks, you know, get a lot of elective surgeries? So is that just a push? But, you know, there's some cases where, you know, folks just aren't going for their checkup, right? They're not going for their dental visit. Do we have a sense of what's going on now?
We don't. I don't have the exact numbers. I suspect, just like you said, that that is going on, that there's been some delay in the healthcare expenses. Like I said, I don't have any exact numbers on that right now. I know up until now, our costs had been up this year somewhat, and as you know, we were planning to increase the contribution to the healthcare fund next year. But we can certainly keep an eye on that and check with HR to see if they have any, what the most recent data they have is, and see how that compares to previous years. Okay. To kind of bring this all together, and this is a little bit of a busy slide, but to kind of give you all a sense of where we have gone between where we are today and where we are, where we were a month ago in March when we talked to you all. In March, we were essentially looking at an on-budget performance would be what I would call it. We thought revenues were going to slightly exceed expenses, and we may increase fund balance by somewhere in the neighborhood of $300,000, that bottom row there. Because there's a lot of uncertainty right now, and it's really difficult to pin down what the outcomes are going to be this year, we want to give you all some ranges of where we think things may end up. On the revenue side, we think a decline of $2.5 to $4 million is possible. We think we may be able to reduce expenses some. We're just not sure how much. So we've kind of given a range there of zero up to $1 million. So to kind of get to the bottom line, and that's, again, that's that bottom row, we do think in the General Fund, and we have a slide a little bit later on to show you the exact percentages, but we do think the General Fund fund balance will decline because expenses are going to be exceeding revenues by somewhere in the neighborhood of $2.8 to $5.5 million. All right. Like I said, I'll come back, and we'll wrap up on General Fund a little bit later, but we did want to talk a little bit about the enterprise funds as well, and how this crisis is affecting the performance in those. And the Civic Center Fund, as you all know, the Harris Casino, or Harris Cherokee Civic Center is closed at the moment, which means no additional revenues coming in, so they will come in under budget on the revenue side. We're assuming if they stay closed through June 30th, that that'll be about $575,000. The good news is with the Civic Center is that there's a lot of control they have over their expenses because of shows. And so if they're not having events, then they're not staffing for it, they're not buying supplies, they're not contracting with vendors. And so there's also going to be an offsetting reduction to expenses that will almost completely offset the revenue loss. We think they may end up having to dip slightly into their fund balance to the tune of about $100,000. But overall, we believe that that fund will be okay at the end of the year.
And when you say their fund balance, you mean the Civic Center's?
Civic Center's fund balance.
Not our fund.
Correct. Correct. Parking Services Fund, slightly different story there. As the city manager indicated, and you all know, we're currently providing free on-street parking and garage parking at free as well. If we continue that through June 30th, that will be a revenue loss of about $1.5 million. Unlike the Civic Center Fund, most of the staff and most of the expenses in parking are, there's not a lot of flexibility to reduce those expenses. You know, obviously, there's not as much temporary staff. Most of the folks in that area are full-time employees. And so we don't think expenses, there's much, as much opportunity to reduce expenses. We are looking at that, though, and hope to come back with some lower estimates for expenses as the year goes on. But right now, we think kind of a worst-case scenario, we could see a fund balance decline of about $1.5 million in the Parking Services Fund. To kind of give you all some perspective, they have about $2.2 million available in their fund balance. So this would use up a pretty large chunk of the fund balance in that fund if it works out that way.
The savings towards the next part we do.
The Transit Services Fund, again, as you all know, we're offering fare-free service right now, and if we continue that through June 30th, that will be a revenue impact of about $200,000. Just kind of regular ongoing operating expenses, we think, as we had told you all in March, and also in January, would be, we're thinking the Transit Fund would be over budget in the current year. We still think it will be. There's, there is, costs are a little bit lower because fuel prices have gone down, but they are incurring some additional expenses related to the COVID-19 crisis. There will be federal money to help offset that. And so we think there still will be a shortfall in the fund, and we'll likely be coming back to you all for a budget amendment, probably at the end of May. But we hope that with the COVID-19 care assistance money, that we can cover the shortfall in the Transit Fund without having to dip into General Fund fund balance to do that.
So Tony, there, in the CARES Act, right, there is specific language for transit funding.
There is.
Do you have a sense of how that is going to be doled out? Is this going to be something that we're looking at the North Carolina, is this going to flow to the states and then flow to us? Is it going to flow straight from the feds? Do you all have any sense of what that looks like?
I can answer that question, actually. Sorry. We've been getting this information through the NPO, and I think it's about 3.3 or 8. 3.8. It was one of those two. 3.8 million will come to the city. For us, there's other money that will flow through us to other jurisdictions, but it'll be about 3.8 for us.
And Julie, is it, basically, we can use it just to replenish? At this point, do you have any, are there any strings attached to what?
The language is very general. It says, you know, it can be for operating, it can be, you know, anything really to kind of respond to the COVID crisis. So this is an absolute legitimate and appropriate use for it, I think. It doesn't, but I think it's generally, we can do kind of what we want with it. Yeah. Capital as well.
Capital related to transit.
Yeah. And it can be used to replace lost revenue as well, unlike, that provision's not available in any of the other CARE Act areas, but in transit it can be. So we can make up that lost fare box revenue with CARE Act funds.
So Tony, let me just sit on this for a second, ask a question. So we were projecting in March about, I think it was about a $0.5 million shortfall because of paratransit. And so this, what this slide tells me is that the system overall is probably spending less, it's costing us less because of COVID, because we're losing $200,000 in, because of fares. But the estimated shortfall is now 300 to 500, as opposed to, say, 500 to 700.
Yes.
Okay. So it's, so this crisis is probably because of fuel prices is actually a little bit to the benefit of transit. So I mean, obviously, we're not serving people as well either, because we don't have a choice about that, but.
Yeah. There are some one-time expenses. I know Jessica's planning to purchase some shields.
Sure.
For the drivers, and I think that that's an expense that will be paid out of the operating fund. So that'll offset some of the lower fuel prices there with that, so.
And so who, I'm sorry.
Yeah. So just to clarify, I mean, ask, we were, the last time we said transit was going to be over, but, or, you know, an additional loss of $300,000. So this is not in addition to that $300,000?
No.
Okay. So that encompasses everything?
Yes.
Okay.
Oh. And so under our contract with the management company, who incurs, who incurs the additional costs and who benefits from the savings? So are we paying, does the cost for those shields and all the other COVID response, does that pass through to us? And then also, the fuel savings, we get the benefit of that, not the management company?
Correct. And we would also buy the shields as well. That would not be bought through the management company?
Okay. Okay.
Tony, on this as well, just the, I know we've gotten some emails from some of the folks who are into transit. There was an article today in the Washington Post about the health and safety of transit workers here. Do we have a sense, and you may not, you're probably the wrong person here, but I just want to float it out here as, you know, as we have Kathy and Deborah here, is, you know, we, I mean, I was wanting to make, wanting to make sure that the folks who were driving these buses are in, you know, are protected, right? And that's a, that's a big concern of folks. And I think there's also been a question, I think the mayor has said this, other cities across the state are, some of them even considering stopping their transit system, or, you know, radically scaling it back. And I'm, you know, this is, I'm not, I'm not, I'm not asking this question from a cost-savings perspective. I'm asking this more from like a, like a health and safety and kind of operational perspective, whether there's been any decisions or thoughts as to whether to scale back some of the, you know, temporarily, some of the transit services.
We have scaled back somewhat. I think a few of our lines, I think about a week and a half ago, we scaled back on those, and I will get you those specific lines. And we got a little pushback on reduction of those services as well. We will be going to our phones a lot because we've got staff watching, and they're trying to help us respond to some of these questions. Obviously, normally, they would be here under different circumstances. But in terms of safety, safety has always been a concern of ours for our employees. When we first got word that, so Jessica's texting me right now, and I may have some additional information for you. So I hope that you all will allow us to be somewhat informal.
Sure.
For this session. Safety is always a critical and key to us when we first heard about the severity of this pandemic. We have bought masks, shields, gloves. We have cordoned off the buses such that seats are separated within the six feet and probably additional distance. So we're doing our best. We are also asking people who are waiting for buses to enforce the six-foot distance and having our transit workers wear masks, and even having the police help us ensure that that distance is being followed.
And so one of the things that we've done, just to put a finer point on that, is we're limiting it to, we're limiting each bus to 10 passengers. And we've, and to accommodate for, on the larger, on the more heavily-used routes, we've now doubled up on the buses. So there are two buses that come to help accommodate the people who would ordinarily be riding that bus. Even with that, we know, I have heard, people are being left behind at bus stops. And so I think, as we think to next year, well, as we think to our continued response, and particularly using this federal, these federal dollars, I would love for our staff to be thinking about how, what else can we do to take care of, to to be thinking about how, what else can we do to, to take care of, to, to help the people who, you know, are being left behind to actually get where they need to go? Because, you know, there's, there are a lot of ways we could use that money, but I think, you know, making sure that the service that we can offer continues to, to serve the people it needs to serve is, is a priority.
I'm sorry. No, I was going to say, and so the point I'm trying to make is, I'm not saying we should be leaving those folks. I'm trying to think, given that we've, given that this is a crazy time right now, right? And, and we're trying to figure out, well, how, you know, there's, there's still a certain, certain, certain group of folks who are using the buses, right? And they're going to a certain place. I'm wondering whether there are, to the extent we do any alternatives, right? So if those folks are going grocery shopping, and that's the reason why they're taking transit, is there an opportunity, right, to be able to get delivery service to them? If these are folks going to a certain place, right, whether it's the hospital or someplace else that's open, is there an opportunity to, to basically help, you know, think creatively and be able to do that instead of running buses that are only, that only have 10 people that may be jeopardized, that may be putting people, you know, in, I would say, harm's way. That's not, that's not the right way of saying it. But are there alternatives to what we're doing right now in order to get the, to help the people who need the transit service?
And we certainly know that there needs to be additional analysis based on, unfortunately, the times that we are in right now. But I did want to provide to you the information I've gotten from Jessica. Yes, we have scaled back. There are three routes, routes 170, the S6, and one WE bus. And as Julie said, we're limiting the 10 people. Extra cleaning resources from city staff to support. And we've had, let's see, reductions, reductions based on less drivers. So we, we're trying to adjust to this new normal, and it is almost a week-to-week kind of call for us in terms of services.
Just one more quick note on that. There are cities that have been, not necessarily in this crisis, but over the last couple of years, have been making good use of Uber and Lyft, at least theoretically have been making use of Uber and Lyft to help.
Yeah, for first and last month.
Exactly. So this might be the opportunity for us to sort of look at that. You know, if people get left behind at a bus stop, they can call an Uber and a Lyft, and somehow the city will figure out how to reimburse them. I don't know how we figure that out, but that's just, that's just an idea.
Well, you know what they say, you never waste a crisis. And essentially, this is a lot of lessons learned for us. Certainly, hey, that we are in this predicament, but it is what it is, and we're learning, and we are adjusting. But quality is still very important to us. So it's, it's not that, we're not thinking about quantity of service at all, but we really are thinking about how can we provide the best service with the limited resources that we have to the people who are, who are trust riders.
So to finish up on the enterprise funds, as you all know, with the water fund, there is a no-cut-off policy in place, and we're also seeing the beginnings of some decreased usage with businesses being closed and such. So there will be a revenue impact on the water fund. We don't think it's going to be substantial over the last three months of this fiscal year, to the point where we're going to have to look at reducing services or making any major changes in the water fund. I think if it were to continue past that, then, then we may have to revisit that. And then obviously, the last two enterprise funds, which we haven't mentioned, Storm Rider and Street Cut, there's really no major impact there. The Street Cut Fund is on a cost-reimbursement basis, so as folks are, would be cutting the streets, if they're not cutting the streets, then, you know, we're not sending crews out. And so, so that one, that is a break-even fund. So just to come back and kind of summarize this, this first part of the presentation, we mentioned in the general fund that we do think there's going to be a decline in fund balance right now. We're estimating somewhere between 2.8 and then $5.5 million. And so what that translates into in terms of a percentage, as you all know, we have a policy that we maintain 15% of our expenses. Had there been no, no crisis and no issue, we would have ended the year somewhere around 18%. Under that best-case scenario, we showed you all, we'll come in at just under 16. But if we do go to the worst-case scenario, it is possible that we might come in slightly under our, our policy goal at the end of this fiscal year. So just to summarize again, in the general fund, current year, potential fund balance decline. In the enterprise funds, really, the only one, only enterprise fund we're concerned about right now is the parking fund and the other funds, the other enterprise, other enterprise funds, we believe are going to be okay through the rest of this fiscal year. So that concludes the first half of the presentation on the current year. If you all have any questions, we can certainly go back and talk about any of this before we move on to next-year budget planning.
Probably minor, but I don't, I'm not really sure. I don't have a sense for it. But it's my understanding that there is not insignificant percent of employees that are considered nonessential, and so they're being used in other functions throughout the city or just on hold. I'm wondering if we might not want to reconsider for those employees, like if they're training that maybe they were slated to do next year, you know, that we could have them do now. I mean, I realize that they're not going to be able to travel, et cetera, but, you know, to the extent that we're paying folks anyway, and, you know, they're not able to do their slated job, it just may be something to consider, just to, you know, make people feel like they're.
Best use of time.
Right, best use of time, and also that makes them have, you know, know that we want them to stay, stick around with the city. So it just may be something to consider.
So just on that, too, and, and this is something that, you know, we've been talking a lot, and I know, Tony, I've been emailing you and Deborah about, but I feel like raising this, you know, for some of the other council members, and this, this piggybacks off, off your point, Gwen. Yeah, I think part of our goal right now, too, is to, is to utilize as many federal relief resources as we possibly can, right? There's the CARES Act, and there, you know, hopefully, there'll be, there'll be more, more relief, so to speak, coming from either the state or the federal government. One of the areas that, that I've been working a lot of the cities with, who are kind of in the same boat as us, and are trying to figure out, what do we do with personnel, is actually looking to, to furlough some of those employees. But, but they're doing so in a way, not, not in a way that, that they're doing to, you know, I know that strikes usually fear in the heart of folks, but in some cases, depending upon the salary, because of the federal benefit, the $600 benefit, depending upon the salary that the employees may have, they actually may be better off financially if they are furloughed versus sticking around. I mean, you get a $600 benefit, the way that works is, you know, as long as you qualify for $1 worth of, of state unemployment comp, you know, so whether it's your hours reduced to a certain level or, or whatever that is, you get that $600. Doesn't matter what your unemployment, you know, unemployment amount is. And so, so I know a lot of places are trying to figure out the interim, you know, how do we save money without hurting our employees? And, and a lot of folks are considering that route, because, again, it gets folks off of our salary for a little bit. They're actually doing better financially than they are. And you keep them on the healthcare plan because in most cases, these folks aren't really spending any money on healthcare anyway. I mean, it's, it's a humanitarian thing first and foremost, but if you're looking from a cost-savings perspective, you're keeping the employees on your, on your plan. And, and again, I mean, you have them redeployed doing other things, and we're not here to second-guess you or, or to do anything like that. But, but that is an option, particularly for places where, you know, we talked about the parking fund, you may have, may have employees there. It's an opportunity for them. They're not, they're not financially being hurt by this. And, and, you know, essentially, we're taking advantage of federal relief. And in a way, it's a way of saving money in the short term. Now, the one thing is, that $600 bucks goes away currently at the end of July. So unless it gets reauthorized. But, but there are, you know, again, there are potential options out there if we're looking to, you know, to essentially be creative on how to, how to, how to address that, how to tap into it.
Yeah, and, you know, we had those email exchanges last week, and, I know, I've been working in North Carolina for 20 years, and I don't have a whole lot of experience with furloughs. I think it's interesting. We did talk to some other cities in the last few weeks here in North Carolina. At the moment, nobody's here in North Carolina, at least, is thinking about furloughs. I think part of it is, you know, in other states, I think local government revenues are more sensitive to economic ups and downs. I think, you know, one of the things, we complain a lot about the, the fact that we don't have a whole lot of revenue growth year over year here in North Carolina, and a lot of that relates to the property tax system and that being our primary revenue source. But also, in times like this, tends to shield us as well from some of the worst of the, of the recession impacts. So if you have local governments that are really heavily reliant on sales taxes, or they have a different type of property tax system that's more impacted by, you know, short terms, up and downs, I think the, the financial impact can be greater in other places other than North Carolina. So I, I was trying to recall, I mean, I don't think even during the recession, there were any places that I knew of here in North Carolina that, that furloughed employees. So, but obviously, we're dealing with unprecedented times, and so if this goes on, that might be something that folks do begin to look at.
Right, Tony, part of the reason to suggest this is, we still have, according to what you have, we've got between a three to a $5.5 million gap that we're going to have to figure out. And while fund balance is there for that reason, you know, that's why we were at 18%. I think that's what Deborah suggested we have two, three months ago before all this hit, and going down to 13.8 is not, is not the worst thing in the world. The other two things I would just throw out there in terms of, as we're thinking through this, you know, one is, is, you know, Gwen talked about, you know, looking at employees and looking at, at, you know, their use. The other question I have, too, is looking at our current operations, right? Are there, are there, I mean, we're in a situation right now where we're really deeming things essential, right? Are there things now, and I know you wanted to talk about a continuation budget, but are there things now that, that, that we don't need to be doing next year or that we can take a pause from? They're not, they're not going to make people happy, but just kind of rolling it over is not going to, we're not going to be able to do that. We're not going to be able to tax increase. I can't imagine us doing a tax increase at this point. And, you know, the other thing is.
Say that last part again?
Yeah, I, I can't.
Can't imagine.
I can't imagine, right? Say no, I said, I can't imagine, right? I'm giving myself some room. But it wouldn't, yeah, and probably at this point, you don't, you shouldn't raise taxes in the middle of a recession. The second thing is, though, is whether there's any ability to cooperate with the county on some of these services that we have as well. Again, to try and think creatively here in the short term, you know, are there ways of, of reducing costs that, that we can, that we can make this work? And I know we've got something on our agenda, you know, in the, in the, for our council meeting on this. But, you know, we talked about this stuff theoretically, like the theory's gone right now. Now it's time to actually implement this stuff. And, you know, it's easy to talk about it, now we got to do it.
Yeah, I think, I mean, Deborah and I chatted about this, and you said it, too. I mean, we need to learn from this crisis. I think it's really fabulous that the county and the city are working so closely together. But, and I think we've worked hard to try to eliminate any overlap, but there still are some, I think. And, you know, there are some, maybe it's not overlap, but there could be some real organizational improvements on countywide and citywide that, you know, I, I really would, would urge the staff to consider really thinking outside the box and thinking about, you know, what, what's the county doing that, that we could be doing or vice versa? Or how could we merge it a little bit better? I mean, there's a couple ideas that I've already talked to Deborah about that we will not air publicly. But, but, but again, this whole, and even to BJ's point, I mean, I just, you know, to the extent that we have things that need to be done, that we've been putting off, you know, that maybe it isn't in people's job titles, but if, if they're, if they're not being fully utilized, can we get them? I mean, I just heard, I, I had a discussion with somebody at Mission, they are paying nurses 75% of their salary to clean the hospital. So, I mean, it may not be the, the job that people signed up for, but if there's things that, and we know that we have backlog of a lot of things, and, you know, not to put anybody at risk or a job that's not consistent with their abilities, but, I mean, we just should be thinking about how can we utilize these folks while we're paying them and, and they are not able to do their normal job.
And, and I really want to assure you all that we are, are doing exactly that. We have, I think we meet twice, virtually, with all the department heads, talking about redeployment and how we are using our resources. Are there things that we could be doing more innovatively? Are there some things in a department that, man, I wish we had had time to do that? Those are the things that we are really, really putting our resources toward, particularly during these times when, when people are at home and they can actually, well, you know, working at home is kind of tough for, for me, but I, I think for some, it may be the most creative time that they have, because they're not running, you know, to, to different meetings and, and being interrupted, having to travel, you know, or do whatever. I do just want to go on record of saying that our employees are the most important and valuable resource that we have. The issue of furloughing and layoffs and rightsizing and downsizing, for me personally, unless you all direct me otherwise, will be the last resort. It is the very last thing that I think this organization needs. And I say that sincerely because we are so under-resourced right now, and I would hate to lose really, really, which I think we have, really, really good employees. I think we are going to recover. It is going to be slow, but I do believe that we can keep our employees engaged, and I think we can keep them working and fulfilled, and, and I think loyal to the city of Asheville, particularly in a time of crisis. We need that type of loyalty on both sides, us to them and them to us. And I think they're willing to give it to us if we give it to them.
The only other point is, I would, I mean, as good, as, as good as we are, I don't think we know what worst case is. I have, and so I, I would.
Is it worst-case estimate?
Yeah, I mean, I would, I would tailor these slides to indicate that, that, you know, frankly, these are unprecedented times. And so I, I just, you know, would say, like, let's be careful about saying worst case, because, I mean, we could eat that fund balance up way below the 13%, not probably fairly easily. So I don't know what the words are, but if they haven't, you know, just remember that some people, the only thing they're going to see is your slides and not hear how, how much sort of, you're not really sure, goes into this. So I would just ask you to kind of go back and look at these and just, again, put as much, you know, you've done, you've done the best you can, but, because I don't think, I mean, if you know that it's a worst-case scenario, God, I mean, we need to, we need you someplace else, you know? You need to be like, talking to leaders bigger than this.
I absolutely agree. I mean, I, I, on Monday, picked up this presentation, looked at it after the weekend, and I grew more pessimistic over the weekend with, as the news kept coming in. So, so, yeah, we absolutely, and, and, you know, as we began to get more data and try to get some sense of it, we will, we will revise the numbers as needed, so. So we move into next year at this point?
Oh, sure.
Okay.
I'm sure, yeah, wow, this will be great.
The good news continues. Okay, so, so again, transitioning.
From bad news to really bad.
Transitioning into talking about next budget year. And so just a summary kind of this, of this next section that we're going to go through, what you're going to hear us talk about here in just a moment is delaying, and I think you all have already talked to a city manager probably about that in your check-ins, delaying decisions around the budget as long as we possibly can and stay, still meet state statutes in terms of when we have to adopt the budget. We're going to show you the general fund revenue projections, and again, a lot of uncertainty at this point, but we have reduced those fairly substantially compared to what we were showing you about a month ago. And we'll be recommending, most likely in the, in the city manager's proposed budget that comes to you all in May, that we delay implementing any new services or program enhancements for the time being. So we've made some adjustments to the schedule, again, to try to give us as much time as possible to make decisions. Initially, the manager's proposed budget was going to be brought to you all on May 12th. The public hearing was going to be on May 26th. The public hearing was going to be on May 26th, and council was going to adopt on June 9th. We're proposing now to move the presentation of manager's proposed budget back to May 26th. That will still allow us to meet the statutory deadline of having a proposed budget presented to you all by June 1st. So we'll make that change. We will then move that public hearing back by one meeting and plan on moving adoption of the budget also back to the last meeting in June, which is again, the last time that statutorily, we could, you all could adopt a full one-year budget. Now, there is one other option, and we did want to mention this. It hasn't gotten a whole lot of discussion so far at least, but state statutes do allow for the adoption of an interim budget. So if we feel like, you know, in June, that we really don't have enough information yet to make final decisions, local governments in North Carolina can adopt an interim budget. It was done back in 2003. A lot of governments across the state did it at that point because there was some uncertainty about the state withholding some money from us during that time. We utilized a two-month interim budget in FY03, so that got us through to the end of August, and then city council adopted the annual budget at that point. I would say if, as we move along, we'll definitely stay in touch with other folks. I think that's, that would be an option only if other local governments in North Carolina were doing it back in '03, and I was here in '03 when this happened. And my memory is a little bit fuzzy, but I'm pretty certain at that point that the state treasurer's office gave guidance on this and basically said, "It's okay, we understand if you all do this." I think absent that this time around, we probably would not want to be the only local government or one of just a handful in North Carolina to do that. You know, credit agencies will look at governments and how they handle this crisis, and, you know, if we're the only one who's not adopting a budget, I think that would not reflect well. So, but again, we'll continue to monitor this.
So, yeah, I didn't understand this interim budget. Is that just for a short period of time, so you only budget for a couple months?
Yep, you budget two months, and it's a continuation budget, so you budget for whatever expenses you think you will incur during that two-month time period. You can't add any new services, you can't raise the tax rate or anything like that.
Okay. And can you keep adopting, can you keep adopting interim budgets theoretically?
Well, you can, and the problem was, and this is what happened last time, was eventually the county needs to know what the tax rate's going to be so that they can begin billing. And so last time, they told us that by the end of August, we really needed to let them know what our tax rate was going to be. And so really, end of August is pretty much as late as you could go with an interim budget.
Were you here then?
I was here. I started in '90.
I was going to say, what were you, like four?
Well, thank you.
Yeah, he was four.
Yeah, I'd been here, I guess I'd been here about five years at that point, and I was still a young man and still learning, so, anyway, all right.
So, so this is the suggestion?
It's a possibility. Again, I would think if we hear that there's-
We're still, we're still moving. This is all still fluid, yes.
Yes, so, all right. So in speaking of being fluid, there is a lot of unknowns, obviously, and we've talked a little bit about this already. How far will sales tax revenue fall? How quickly will economic growth return, and what will it look like? Will it be a V-shaped recovery, or is it going to be more of a gradual recovery? We've talked a little bit about how property tax collection rates may decline. We haven't really witnessed that before in any of other, any other recessions, but that's definitely a possibility. This time around, will city facilities continue to be shut down after July 1st? And back to that question of when and how much assistance will we receive from the federal and state government? So a lot of unknowns, so please keep that in mind as we go through the next few slides. So here's where we get pretty, pretty number-heavy at this point. So when we met with you all at the retreat, we talked about baseline revenue growth in the general fund. And at that point, we were estimating we were going to get about $6.8 million in revenue growth next year. Where we're at today is we're down to $2 million. So that's been a $4.8 million reduction in our growth projections in about a month. And we'll walk you through what that $4.8 million makes up. The biggest piece of it is sales taxes. We talked a little bit about what the league is projecting for the rest of this year. They put out three scenarios for next year, the most conservative of which is an overall decline of 3.2% for the year for sales taxes. Their most aggressive, which they call the moderate approach, is 1.5% growth. And what they're, what they project there is essentially sales taxes would be flat for the first part of the fiscal year, and then we'd start to see some growth in the second half of the year. So right now, in our budget projections, we are using the moderate scenario, so we're using the most aggressive of those three that the league has put out. And even with using that estimate, we are still, that represents a $2.8 million reduction in our estimate compared to what we were, what we had in the budget in March when we talked to you all. On property taxes, again, I mentioned that reduction in the collection rate. By state statute, we can't budget a higher collection rate next year than what we're anticipating this year. And so by doing that, by reducing the collection rate assumption, we had to reduce our property tax estimates by about $600,000 for next year. I did have a conversation this morning with the county tax assessor. You all may have heard from the county budget project, or budget presentation last week that HCA is still appealing, their property tax values. In our conversation this morning, he told me that the numbers that they've given us, the estimates for next year assumes a loss, appeal loss associated with that. So for now at least, he doesn't think we need to go back and change our revenue estimates based on, based around how much we think we're going to get from HCA, but he does think that appeal process will continue for a while. So we may not have answers to that before budget adoption takes place.
Tony, if, if businesses go out of business, so, you know, say a restaurant were to stop doing business and they owned their property, does that have any effect on the property tax rate? It really doesn't, does it?
No, it does not. I mean, the value of the property is going to stay the same.
So that would really just be a collection issue as opposed to the revenue?
Correct. Do they have the ability to pay? Yes.
Right.
Okay, some other revenue adjustments we've made, and I mentioned the reduction in the current year estimate for investment earnings, same thing next year, we had to reduce our estimate there. We were going to bring you all some fee increases. In fact, we were originally scheduled to adopt those tonight. Given the current situation, we have decided to not recommend any fee increases at this point in the general fund or any of the other funds. And what that means is about a $300,000 reduction in revenue estimates in the general fund. Most of the other general fund revenues at this point at least, we're keeping flat and hoping that there will be some improvement late in the fiscal year. So just kind of to bring this all together in kind of a scorecard, just to walk you through that $4.8 million reduction, here are the components of that. And again, the biggest piece is the sales tax at 2.8 million. So what that looks like in just terms of budget-to-budget comparison? So this current year, we had a total revenue budget of $132 million. We now think the growth for next year is going to be just a little over $2 million. Again, most of that is in property taxes, and so that's the reduced picture. So we've gone from $6.8 million in available revenue down to what we think is about $2 million in new revenue for next year.
Is it the recommendation that fee increases be frozen for the whole year, or if we were to do the sort of two-month continuing budget, kind of give us a little more time to size it up?
Yeah, so fee increases can be adopted at any point during the fiscal year. So now, property taxes, that's the only, you all get one chance to set the property tax rate, and so once that's done, that can't be revisited. But fees can be changed or adopted at any point during the year. Okay, so switching gears to expenses. So you all may remember when we talked about the baseline budget in March and also in January, we told you that revenue growth was likely going to be eaten up by all, by the expenditure growth in the baseline budget. So we were projecting about $6.8 million in expenditure growth. We've gone back in the past few weeks and we've made some reductions to that, to that growth. We've gotten it down to about $3.4 million. Still don't have a balanced budget in the general fund, we're still working on that, but wanted to walk you all through some of the changes that we've made to the budget to get it closer to being balanced. But wanted to start with just mentioning those things that are still included in next year's base budget. One is the implementation of the 31-2, which we mentioned already when we talked about this year. There's still, the state has not given any indication that they are not going to move ahead with the mandated increase in the retirement contribution, so we still have that in the budget for next year, and that's about a $700,000 cost in the general fund. And then to continue the transit services that we began in January of this year, and also pay for the pair transit cost increase, those dollars are also still in next year's budget. And we'll, we have a chart that'll just kind of summarize this in a few slides. Some changes that we have made to try and bring expenditures down, we mentioned the hiring freeze. We will likely be extending that into the beginning at least of next fiscal year for all currently vacant positions. We have taken out the employee pay adjustment, which we originally had assumed would take place at the very beginning of next fiscal year and be a 2.5% increase. That's not in our projections at the moment. And then we've flattened or frozen some of the other contributions that we were, that we typically increase every year by a slight amount, one being the OPEB contribution, the contribution to the CIP debt model, and also, we had planned to increase the health fund contribution from the employer side, and now we're going to be looking to make up any cost increases in the health fund using health fund balance next year. We've also made some reductions to departmental operating budgets. There were some slight increases in those budgets for inflationary increases, cost of doing business, those kinds of things. We've gone back and essentially made all operating budgets flat for next year compared to the current year. And we've worked with Parks and Rec to develop a plan to only partially fund the rad tip maintenance instead of having that begin, begin full funding on July 1st. So here's that scorecard I mentioned. I know this is a little bit small, but we wanted to give you all an indication of, you know, what was in the budget in March, kind of the cost of those things, things that are still in the budget, those things at the top of the chart, and then those things that we have taken out to get the overall increase in the general fund budget down to about $3.4 million. One I didn't mention in the previous slides was the money, the full-year funding of the city's contribution for the fire department grant positions that were approved this year. So where does that leave us? Again, I mentioned that we don't have a balanced budget right now, we're still working on that. Right now, the gap in the general fund is about $1.5 million. We are going to work, that's sort of the next step for us internally. We're going to continue to work over the next few weeks to look at our options for balancing the budget, one of which would obviously be a fund balance appropriation to get us through. We may have to make some additional revenue adjustments, perhaps we can move some up, perhaps we can move some down, but we are definitely going to continue to monitor revenues. And then we may end up having to make further reductions to departmental operating budgets to get the budget balanced as well.
So revenue adjustments, what's in the umbrella of revenue adjustments?
That's a good question. So I think, you know, we're obviously, as we get additional sales tax information, we actually, we got another month of sales tax. It was only, it was January sales tax, that was data that came in well before the crisis began, but we got that information yesterday. And so we're, you know, we're consistently getting new information. Obviously, if we, if we see a continued decline in DSD permit revenue, we may have to adjust that down. And so, and if it looks like we're going to perhaps extend closure of some facilities past July 1st, you know, we would have to adjust revenues down. I think in most cases, I don't see a whole lot of hope for revenue adjustments that would lead to us increasing estimates on that side. But we're, you know, we're definitely trying to keep our options open and look for ways to close that gap over the next few weeks.
Well, so all of those things you said, Tom, like-
Yes, exactly.
-their level are negative. So what do you consider a revenue adjustment that would close a gap? Are you talking there about raising property taxes as an option? No, shaking your head.
No, no.
You're talking about, what are you talking about?
Well, again, if we, so for example, if we were to, we still have several months while we have January and February sales tax revenue. We just got January yesterday, and it was better than we had anticipated. So we factor that into our estimates. So that may help slightly increase our revenue estimates for sales taxes for next year, even if we keep the same assumptions moving forward. So there may be some opportunity for that. Again, I don't think there's a whole lot of opportunity on the revenue side in terms of looking at the data and increasing the adjustments there. So it's really, it may come down to a question of fund balance appropriation and how much we as an organization are comfortable with. You know, fund balance, I mean, this is really the type of situation, I mean, it's the classic textbook type of situation where you would want to use fund balance to get you through the short term so that you don't have to make substantial reductions on the operating side. And so that may be where we land with the budget this time.
And, I mean, I know that our very, our pretty healthy fund balance is one of the, one of the reasons our rating, our debt rating is so positive. Do we have a sense of like, how bad it could get before it starts to affect our bond ratings?
I don't, I mean, obviously, I think-
Is it going to be basically dependent on what other cities do?
Yeah, I think-
It's going to have to be, are we in line or a little better than other cities or not, yeah?
Yeah.
It's just, it's almost competition with what other cities are doing.
Yeah, and Deborah did remind me, I didn't mention, you know, obviously, the federal and state assistance. And so, you know, as, and that might be an opportunity to, you know, to add revenue to next year's budget if we find that we're going to get money to help offset the expenses or the lost revenue that we're seeing. So that is one positive opportunity we may see.
This is a small thing, but what assumptions have we made relative to the alcohol, beverage, control board revenues?
So we have-
That would be a positive.
Right. No, it's actually not a positive, not while the restaurants are closed.
Oh, yeah.
Right now, because retail, I mean, yes, revenue is up for individual sales at the ABC, but mixed beverage, which is what they call, you know, when they sell to restaurants, that's down, and that's like 35% of their revenue. And, you know, obviously, it's not going to be just down, it's going to be gone for this last quarter. But I'm just wondering, have you even, have you talked to them about, and, you know, put their assumptions in?
We have not, and I'm glad you brought it up.
I mean, it's about $3 million bucks, right?
It's, oh, gosh.
Two and a half million?
Yeah, I think it's somewhere around $2 million. It is one of those revenues that we're, that we're right now keeping flat based on trend for next year. But, yeah, that's one that actually had not been on my radar, so, but we can reach out and see what they're estimating for the last quarter of this year. There's, that's also one of those revenues where there's a lag, and so we won't get that last quarter payment until early next fiscal year.
Right.
But, yeah, we can, we can check on what their estimates are.
But, yeah, I mean, your fourth quarter, you'll definitely see it down.
Yeah.
So.
The only thing to throw here, Tony, is you're right, I think this is sort of a textbook example, time to look at fund balance. This is also a time, theoretically, that it may not be a bad idea to look at capital projects. I know that's one of the areas you guys are tightening up, and the reason for that is, you know, depending upon what's happening in the market, what typically happens in a recession is those prices go down. So, you know, to the extent we have funding, to the extent it's possible to do that, and I'm not, you know, we have to see the numbers before you say something along the lines of saying, hey, let's go out for a bond. I'm not sure, I'm not sure if that ship has sailed or where that is right now in terms of where we are. But this is the right time to do it because what's happening is out in the marketplace. Typically, you know, you're, a lot of those folks are competing, and we may be able to get a lot more done over this time period. It's sort of counterintuitive, a lot of places don't want to do it, right? You see a capital line item, and here, we reduced it because, you know, it's, I understand why, but in situations like these, a lot of places go through this, they're in a recession, and we ask ourselves, why didn't we invest way back four years ago, you know, when, you know, when all of a sudden the prices really were down?
Yeah, absolutely, yeah. And we've had some conversations internally about that, and we definitely want to move ahead with all the general obligation bond projects that are underway since that's under a seven-year deadline. I know some of the, some of the other local governments across the state we've talked to have been delaying capital. Some places have a lot more pay-as-you-go capital than we have here, and so that provides an opportunity for kind of an immediate cash savings that we don't really have here because so much of our capital is debt-funded. But definitely on our radar. And, you know, there's also some talk about a potential, you know, second round of stimulus perhaps being an ARA-type stimulus from before that would go toward capital infrastructure and making sure that we're positioned to have projects available that would be eligible for that type of funding as well.
Right, because my sense is a lot of the stuff we're getting from the feds, to the extent we're getting this, this is going to be one-time stuff. And so you start to worry when you start using fund balance to balance operating. Again, you can do it for a limited time, but that's not, eventually, it's going to catch up with you.
Right. So to transition again, we left off with the baseline budget, and just to kind of transition into the- And just to kind of transition into the strategic investment requests, the enhancement requests that we discussed with you all at the, at the retreat. And there were a number of those that came up through the budget process through departments. This is a slide that we shared with you all at the retreat that highlighted some of those that addressed you all's strategic priorities. There's also, you know, second slide here, which shows some more of those requests that were part of the, the, what we call the enhancement budget. You all heard specifically about three of those requests at the retreat. One, one area is transit, so we did want to talk a little bit about that. As I mentioned, the, we, we do, there is money in the continuation budget for a full year implementation of, of the enhancements that we started this year. However, at the moment, you know, we talked about a tax rate increase potentially to fund the extended hours for next year. So right now, at least, there's no money in the, the budget for that. You know, we'll continue to look at the, the money that's going to be available through the federal cares grant.
So that, there is some possibility that, as I understand it, the extended hours, while there's not money in this budget, obviously, and probably even less of an appetite to raise property taxes to pay for it, there is a possibility that the CARES, CARES Act or CARES program or CARES funds, whatever you call it, might have, might provide one-time funding for extended hours for transit services, correct?
That's our assumption. That's what Jessica and I have been talking about. But again, that would be one time and then we'd have to pick up that cost the next following year for FY '22.
Right. So, so it would be important in my mind to, to build out that service at a point in time where we feel pretty confident we're going to be looking at a better financial situation.
Absolutely. Yeah, I, I will, so that, I was going to suggest that we, that we do that, that we use that, that CARES money to expand the evening hours. And, and I realize that would be, you know, probably a one-time thing. We, we have talked about the fact that there might be other revenue sources. I mean, who knows what's going to happen with the, the proposed changes to the TDA, to the occupancy tax. But there certainly was an option put on the table in those discussions. But, but the, the bigger point I want to make is, you know, the longer this lasts and the more people are out of work for a longer period of time, the more transit is going to become a key part of our recovery. And as I said at the retreat, you know, part of built, part of the resilience of our city. And so I, I think, I, I would continue to add, I would, I would advocate for putting that money toward that service. And then, you know, we, even if we don't know where it's going to come from the next year, we, we figure it out. I mean, we're, we're not going to know. I mean, we could, you know, we could delay this for this year because we don't know about next year. We could delay it next year because we don't know about the next year. To me, this is, this is a place where we, where we need to do a little jumping off of-
I mean, I would just push back on you that this isn't the normal-
I get it.
Year-to-year unknown scenario.
I get it.
This could be a catastrophic, a catastrophic change in revenue year over year. So I, I don't, I would want to be, before we start spending new money, I, I want to, I want to know if we're going to see a, you know, a little bit of a normalization on the horizon. I mean, I don't want to be sitting here with a $20 million deficit in the next fiscal year going, oh, well, we, we're going to have to take back this service that we-
Well, and I think too, I mean, you know, again, hoping against hope that we'll actually get a, the state legislature will actually do something with the TDA funding. I, I sense that that will not be on their priority list in May. I could be wrong. But also, I mean, I think, you know, and, and that puts the, the additional revenue squarely on either property tax increases or sales tax increase. And, you know, we're really going to have to see how the community recovers. I mean, as, 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 we are highly tourist dependent. This will be one, that will be one of the last things people will put back on to their, on their personal spending. I mean, when I, I looked at a, I looked at a spreadsheet today that was in the New York Times and they talked about where, where people have decreased their expenses. And you can just see that anything travel, anything tourism related, it was like the first thing to go. And it will be the last thing that comes online. So an idea that we're going to be able to increase our revenue through even sales tax may not be reasonable at all for the next several years. Not just next year, but the next several years. So, you know, assuming that magically we're going to find that money, especially given how reliant our, our local economy is on tourism, I'm, or visitors, I am very nervous about that.
Yeah. And I don't, I mean, I don't disagree that this is a, this is a strange time. This is, this is a service that this community has waited for, for years, probably more than five years. This ask has been out there. And again, I think it will be, I think it, I think us investing in this will help the people who live here in a way that, that we don't do right now. And I think, you know, again, we're learning a lot about efficiencies in, in systems right now. And, you know, if we get to next year and we're not able to, and, and there isn't enough money in the transit system, we might be able to look at efficiencies in other parts of the system. I wouldn't assume that we would necessarily pull this service back. There could be other places that we could find efficiencies, so.
One other thing I, I just want to note on transit too is, is, I think, I think everyone's making good points here. And, and, you know, it's, we're, we're all in sort of this situation where, as you said earlier, we're in sort of a gray area here. I mean, I think the one thing with respect to transit is going forward is, you know, regardless of which way, you know, whether we fund the additional hours and figure out a way is just, just having a sense once things do return to normal, you know, is, is what we're invest- the question I keep coming back to on transit is not because I don't want to expand it or otherwise, is, is are we getting the dollars? Is the value for what we're getting worth it, right? Is, is there enough ridership? You know, and I know there's this theory of like, you know, if we build, if we build it, they will come, right? And so, so I think, you know, and, and I understand that and I hear that. And I don't, I don't want to, I don't want to, I don't want to, you know, suggest that, that there's not some merit to that. But I, I think, you know, given the amount of money that's being put in here and how expensive it is, having a sense of saying, okay, are we hitting the targets that we think we should be hitting with this in terms of ridership? And now's a terrible time to measure it. I must suggest that we do that right?
We can't, we're not going to hit that.
But, but, you know, as, as we're thinking through this and if things do return to normal, I think that's, it, it's an important thing, I think, for folks who are saying like, well, because your next slide talks about compensation, right? And, and we talked about how much we value our employees before and we know we have jobs, but now we've just taken away their pay increase, right? And so, you know, that's what I would be advocating for, right? I would have my hat on doing what Julie's doing on the next slide. But, you know, but, but I think we need to be able to say to a lot of those, those folks like, the, the money's going over here. It's doing what we think it's, it's going to do. Because, because if it's not, and, and, you know, and, and there may be alternatives, like, you know, for, for getting people transportation to where they need to, where they need to go. I mean, the goal isn't to have a nice transit system. The goal is to meet the needs of our, of our community, right? And with respect to transit.
So when we presented to you all in March, we presented a level of complexity in March. And so in April, the complexity is exponentially different than it, than it, I would say it is way more complex than it was in, in March. So with additional revenue from the federal government, state government, the first thing we're going to try to do is offset expenses. That's the, that's our first thing. We're going to try to pay ourselves back for the amount of effort and money and expenses. You saw a lot of expenses that are going out and not a whole lot coming in. So that will be the first priority for the CARES, CARES Act because the, the parameters, the guidelines are to address COVID-19 types of impacts. Then we will look at enhancements, any kind of service enhancements. We also talked about, we need to really go back and look at the transit master plan and that schedule of implementation. And I think at, at the retreat, you all were saying that you're not trying to keep the, you're not trying to add the service extensions as part of that relook. We may have to. We may have to in terms of when it will be financially and fiscally feasible for us to, to actually roll out those services considering where we are. Again, we are going to look at, and, and I have gone on record. I am so committed to transit. I think it helps build communities. It is key for, again, choice riders. We have to have some form of transit.
I think you're meaning elective, uh, for-
Choice riders.
No, she means choice riders.
Choice.
Yes.
Okay. People who don't have to ride the bus.
In order to build a successful system.
I see what you're saying.
Anybody, anybody who rides the bus is their choice. And, and, so the vernacular, when I came to Asheville, was not transit-dependent, but choice. That's the only choice they have. Some of us, we have other choices. So anyway, committed to transit, but it has to be run efficiently in order for us to build a quality transit system. So we started this conversation about where we are with transit. We don't have the money in the existing, well, the, the next fiscal year's budget. Will we be able to add any kinds of enhancements using federal dollars? We're going to look at that.
Yeah. And my question would be, you know, if we don't use it for enhancements, I, I don't see how we could possibly use $3.8 million, or let's just call it $3 million after we make up for expenses this year. You know, how we could use $3 million other than on enhancements? I mean, the only, sort of the options would be-
If we could use it for capital, why wouldn't you do the transit center?
Well, you, I mean, if the transit center is going to cost $50 million, I mean, but the, I mean, so we could, I mean, and I'm going to encourage us not to do this, you know, use this $3 million and displace $3 million that now comes from the general fund. But then you're in the same situation that you are the next year, that you're not going to have that $3 million and you gotta, you gotta put it back, so.
Although you might be in a, you know, you might be in a better situation than your general fund next year.
Well, you, you, you might be, but you're, you know, it's, it's the, it's the same argument for sort of not making the service expansion. You're, you'd have to go find that money somewhere else. So anyway, so yeah, I guess, you know, the next time we have this conversation, would love to obviously see the plan for how you're planning to spend that money.
We, we will have more, more details. I keep looking at my phone because Jessica's sending me lots of messages that I can't read and talk to you all at the same time. But she, she does have a, a number of ideas about how we could use that money. But she agrees with me that, that the first priority is pay ourselves, address the COVID-related things and then potentially look at enhancements. So that's the priority we will be looking at, those federal.
Great.
Okay. Again, you all received presentations specifically on three investments at the retreat. The second of those is compensation. As we've mentioned a couple of times, we are moving ahead with the implementation of 31-2 and addressing the compression. Across all funds, that's about a $450,000 annual impact. The, the number earlier in the presentation was just for the general fund. Unfortunately, otherwise, as kind of like with transit, at the moment at least, there's, there's not money available to address any of the other recommendations that may arise from, from the compensation, from the compensation study in next year's budget. Then finally, on sustainability, we, we do have some money available in what we call the green, green savings program that we will utilize to address some of the areas that are, that are part of the, the sustainability plan. But there's not going to be significant funding or any funding really available at this point for some of the major capital items that, that we had been looking at, such as the roof replacements and the building systems or to address any of the, the waste reduction plans that, that have been requested by departments.
And I would assume new investments in renewable energy would be on that list as well.
So, and I think we're getting pretty close to the end. And, and this, this was the key takeaways from the retreat. And what we did here was, we added the bold. The, the other language was, was already there and kind of as Deborah indicated a few moments ago, we're in, we're in April now and we were uncertain in March and we're even more uncertain in April. Revenue growth, which we had said was going to be eaten up by operating costs, it's now near very minimal revenue growth as we've shown you all. And it's, it's eaten up even after making reductions to the initial round of expenses that we had programmed for next year. And then, you know, if, if fiscal picture improves or if we get the federal money that's available for, for other services, then, then we can consider enhancements. But it'll, it will take that additional revenue to make those, those investments next fiscal year. So kind of the next steps, as we mentioned, adjusting the budget adoption schedule, that's actually going to come to you all on the May 12th agenda for formal action for you all to adjust the schedule. We're obviously going to continue to monitor economic trends and make adjustments as needed. And we're going to work to balance the general fund budget over the next few weeks and then come back to you all with a, a proposed budget at the end of, the end of May. The last thing I'd say before I turn it over for discussion, the committee council member, Wister Made, about, you know, really not knowing when things will return to normal. So, you know, typically for local governments, there's a, there's a lag between when the recession happens and when it really impacts them. And so with the great recession 10 years ago, it was really that, not the initial year that happened, but it was the year after and even the year after that when we saw the, the biggest financial pinch. This, this may be different this time. Obviously, we've never experienced this kind of crisis before, so we may make a quicker recovery. But it's, it's just really impossible to say at this point, you know, how quickly the economy's going to recover after all this is over. So with, with that, any, any questions you all may have or discussions around any, you know, current year, next year, any, any discussion?
I tell you, the only thing I would, I would put out here too, and just not, just to re-echo this is, you know, there, this is, this is obviously not a situation anyone wants to be in. You all are working through, staff's working through, the public's working through. But, but there are things that, that, that these types of things, these types of situations do provide opportunities for. And again, things like capital, and I'm looking here not just at like, kind of the roads or whatever, but also things like housing, right? And, and those types of, those types of capital projects or those types of funding that we may want to do. You know, there will be federal dollars that will be coming down the pike. I have, I've, you know, given, given what we've seen so far, which has been pretty unprecedented in an election year, I have no doubt more will be coming. But, but those are opportunities and they're going to be one-timers to think about, okay, well, you know, is there, is there, you know, abilities to, to, to address some of our housing needs here? Or, or otherwise through some of those funds that, that may be coming down the pike that, that aren't going to allow us to be, you know, you know, redistribute it, so to speak. That may come with more strings attached to them. So, so to be able to think about that is, is in some cases, as a, you know, one of the few bright sides of this is some opportunities to, 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 to maybe expand that area. That's a, that's a potential opportunity here.
Just, I want to make sure everyone on the phone, Schnika, Brian, Keith. I, I know you guys are having a hard time listening on the phone, so you're probably watching the live stream, which has a little bit of a delay. So if any of you have any questions, we'll just hang tight for here for just a second and see if there are any questions from anyone on the phone.
No, no questions at this phone.
Okay, thank you, Keith. Brian, Schnika?
Yeah, I don't have any questions either. I have been listening to the live stream. It's difficult.
Hearing on the phone?
Are you asking, can we hear you over the phone?
Could you hear that? Keith, can you say it again?
I was asking, were you, were you asking if we could hear you over the telephone?
Yes. I think someone said it was difficult and that may have been Brian that said it was difficult to hear over the phone.
Oh, it definitely is. I've been watching the live stream and trying to chime back in on the phone to make sure I'm keeping up.
Okay. And it seems like we're also losing one council member fairly frequently. But we have Kathy trying to text to see if there are questions or if they're listening, if there are any technical issues. But we'll try to work those out certainly before. if there are any technical issues, but we'll try to work those out certainly before, for the council meeting. But if there are no further questions, we really appreciate the time, we appreciate all the good advice and direction, and we'll go back. We'll do a lot of homework, and we'll wait for additional information so that we can come back, I believe, in May, May 14th, or something like...
26th.
Okay, second meeting in May 26th to provide you all with additional information. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. All right, we're going to recess, and we will be back at 5 o'clock for the regularly scheduled council meeting.